All right, it is 7:01, um, January 12th, and the Select Board is convening, and I guess we take a roll call?
Yes.
One's not here?
We, I mean, we don't.
Or do I have to?
You don't have to take a roll, he's not online. He's online, so you just have to recognize it.
So Michael Tool, Kevin Snyder, and myself, Mike Arts, are all present. Uh, and Kevin Hornsby.
Steve Hornsby.
Sorry, oh my god. Steve Hornsby will hopefully be joining us via Zoom, um, possible, webinar. All right, let's start with the, um, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna start with appointments, resignations, and returns. Can you go on, or can I just carry it?
I guess I could, yeah. I can confirm, uh, that, yes, that Carrie Malley Snyder is, uh, resigned, resigning from the Conservation Commission.
Is there a relation?
There is a relation. She is, in fact, my wife. Um, yep, so disappointing, but she, uh, she has started, uh, the last few months started working full-time, when she originally joined the ConCom. She was part-time, she was working part-time, so she just didn't feel like she could dedicate the, the time necessary to, uh, you know, to do all the pre-work that's required for the ConCom. It's a lot of work up front, you know, um, researching, permit applications and all that. So unfortunately, yeah, she's, she's decided to resign.
All right, we can't convince her otherwise. Maybe down the road, once she gets settled.
Yeah.
All right.
So Madam Chair, if anyone's interested in Conservation Commission, it sounds like this is an open seat.
Yes.
And they would just send you or, like, you know, UAM mic units?
No, just to mic units.
Just to mic units for women? And there's also, uh, there's actually on the website, as of my knowledge, an action letter that they can, or just a form that they can, they can.
It's a form, it's a simple form, yeah.
Yeah, we ju- we just need some kind of letter, or some communication of interest, email form, uh, whatever.
I don't know if we have it, so I apologize.
Yeah, um, just use your, um, so turn your volume all the way down.
Volume what?
It's in the top, uh, it's the second button on the.
You have the big button?
Yeah, the big button. Nope, that's up.
Oh, I'm gonna hear it. There we go, sorry about that. All right, uh, and we have an appointment, um, I guess in the remote tonight, Maggie Cincella to the Economic Development Commissioner. Mike, do you wanna, you know, to color to this, I know Renee, um, the Chair of the EDC had to join us. Or actually, we also have Karen Snyder, or no, it was on.
I can speak a little bit.
All right, do you wanna speak to us?
Uh, sure, so, um, Maggie actually came, uh, expressed, uh, interest, uh, wanna say a couple of months ago, and perhaps, uh, joining the EDC, so, um, just as a member of the public, she's been joining, she's been coming to the meetings, um, for the last several meetings that we've had. She, um, she was, you know, she kinda wanted to see what it was, you know, get a, a feel for if it was something that she, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but my understanding was that she wanted to, you know, just make sure that she could dedicate the time to it. Um, she kinda wanted to see what it was all about, and just recently decided that she wanted to go ahead and, uh, and put forth her, uh, her interest in joining the EDC. So I think she'd be a great, uh, I think she'd be a great member. She's, you know, she's already been, like I said, as a member of the public, participating in the meetings, um, and, um, shows a lot of enthusiasm for it. She's got some business, you know, more experience in the business world, so I think, um, I think she'd be an absolute great addition, so. Yep.
Uh, and there'll be two alternate positions still available. Discussion?
No, I had a chance to meet her, just randomly. It was, I had no idea she was this, and she's like, I'm looking at joining this, and she seemed very excited and seemed very nice, and, um, great, that's just, it's always happened, was someone step up.
Awesome. Would you like to vote on this?
Absolutely, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Maggie Cincella, which is a great name, it's a great baseball name, Cincella to the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any keys to the door?
No, I kept, I kept looking as you were making the budget, don't worry, we'll, we'll let you know if you enjoy.
Right, well, he would lose anyway, three to one, so. All right, congrats to Maggie. What? Oh, I got it, okay. Next, we have an appointment of Michael Sweeney Jr. as the alternate member of, to the Council on Aging, and, and Michael, thank you for joining us. Do you wanna, Mike, do you want us to start with that, and then we left?
Michael came in, uh, with a letter saying he'd like to be appointed, and we talked more about that, and I also was in contact with Janet, the Council on Aging, who said that I'm excited about that. Michael is a member of the working.
Uh, last year I joined the Norton Senior Center on my birthday, I turned 60. I am a, I'm a retired registered nurse, my specialty is, um, psychiatric mental health. I have been a nurse director, I've taught nursing for Cape Cod Community College, I've taught medical assisting at Massachusetts Wade Community College, I'm also a licentious mental health counselor in the state of Massachusetts, all my licenses are still up and running. Um, I feel I have a lot of clinical experience, well, I do have a lot of clinical experience, I don't feel like I have a lot. Um, I am in the learning process, I'm still going, actually, I went to the meeting tonight, and then I got a call, dinner, come here, so that was fun. I really enjoy the opportunity to learn from the women, do only women, I'm a boy right now, um, and I was very, um, welcomed by a group. I know Beth quite well, I was born in her six month before I turned 60, so, we nurses would be a pain in the butt. And, um, I know there's a lot of opportunity, I know that we're, we're moving forward, there's a lot of things going on, I know there's gonna be a new senior center, and it's just more than just seniors, it's also dealing with the community as a whole, because, as you know or don't know, that Beth does a lot of human services. I have expertise in that, I can either assist her, she can use me if she needs to, um, I look forward to, well, you're not retired yet, when you retire, your first year, which I just completed, is, you don't know what to do yourself. And not to be sexist, but as a male, it was like, now, what do I do in my life? I was used to working 16-hour days, I was used to being called in in the middle of the night to go back to work, or whatever. So I'm learning through the process of what that's about. I think the counseling of aging, I don't know, was kind of brought up briefly, is maybe changing the name, I don't know if that's gonna be a possibility or not, I don't know if that's something the board is talking about, I'm just throwing it out there. I think part of it's because they do work with people who are under the age of 60 as well, helping single mothers, single fathers, whatever, in the community.
More human services.
A lot of human service stuff. So I do look forward to the opportunity of an appointment, um, if that would be, had worked out here, um, but either way, I would still be working with the community one way or the other to help. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any question.
Uh, I do have one, which really doesn't necessarily apply to this, but you know me, I'm usually off-subject anyways. Mike, are we still looking for a town nurse?
Yeah.
Don't laugh, I thought about that.
Because it's a great opportunity to work with great people, you know, always try to fill a weekend, uh, so, no, that was like.
Get back retirement.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so, no, that, that.
Well, the problem with that is too, is I'm not a true community nurse, so I would have to learn the laws, the by-was, there's a lot that goes to that position. And yes, I know right now you're hurting for a nurse, and hopefully there's school nurses helping to fill out, I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if there's any retired nurses that don't mind coming in doing paperwork here and there, or giving shots, or doing blood pressures, or whatever, because that's important too, to keep up with obviously vaccinations and, and health here, so, and that's something that even a retired nurse can do.
I'm not 60, I'm a little shy. Um, I, you have great energy, your energy's like coming through, no, we appreciate you stepping up for this, and my, so, Madam Chair, if there's any discussion, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint, um, Michael E. Sweeney Jr. as an alternate to the Member of Council of Aging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, what do you do?
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I have to close up.
Yes, go, go run, no, no, you have to stay here and talk, and talk budget, we, we had to.
Bring water, food. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, next, we're gonna approve the minutes from December 28th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the December 28th Select Board Meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Aye. Any opposed? Approved. Uh, license and permits, mic units, which I was, go ahead.
Okay, um, so you did the liquor license at your last meeting, I think, on this transfer, but they had to transfer the common vic, so this is a transfer of the common vic.
All right, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
No discussion?
No discussion, I don't think.
That would be a little weird to not approve this, right? Um, so I'll make a motion to tra- to transfer for the common victualer license from the House International Incorporated, doing business as Great Woods Manager Feng Zeng, to Norton Jade LLC, doing business as Norton Jade Manager Jidlu, same address.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific, I'm gonna have the full package there.
Congratulations.
2023 License Renewals, which we have a package, did you see those, Michael?
Yeah, there's one.
Is there just one?
It's a package.
Very territorial about this, so make sure that I read it.
Okay, you have, you have been very territorial as a clerk.
All right, we only have one tonight, very exciting. Um, all right, so, um, I would like to make a motion, uh, that, uh, to renew the common victualer license, um, for HH and SH Corporation, doing business as Main Street Pizzeria, 63 East Main Street.
Second. Discussion?
Discussion?
Mike, um, we're approving this now, did this get filed after the deadline?
Um, well, they, they're new because they're transferred, so. It wasn't like a renewal.
Okay, so when you say Main Street Pizzeria.
Is that the one right across here?
Yeah, that one was late, I'm sorry, yeah, that one was late.
This one is late?
Yeah.
Um, they, in the last year, we implemented a new policy, um, regarding late licenses, correct? And is that gonna be applied with that, that, now is it gonna be applied here? Thank you. Um, that's it, Madam Chair.
I just sent Steve the link, he asked for the link, so he should be getting on.
All right.
Uh, we did a motion, it was accepted, discussion.
You, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Uh, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, announcements. Mic units, MBTA.
Just that one announcement for the exam.
Oh, is this, this is actually back to the cabinet, right?
Uh, the.
Announcements on the.
Yep, hang on.
2023.
Sorry, I was just gonna play all this other stuff, heck.
Up here again.
Is that a people? James?
No.
Um, all right, so, um, we, uh, we do have an announcement, um, uh, for, uh, potential, uh, police and transit police officers. Um, the, um, applications are currently being accepted for those positions, municipal police officer, MBTA, transit police officer, and state troopers. Um, the, um, I guess the exam period begins March 18th. Um, you need to apply by January 31st to 2020, uh, 2023, um, at mass.gov/civilservice. Um, and, um, uh, you can also visit, uh, visit the, uh, mass.gov website as well for more information on this, but, um, if you're interested in becoming a municipal police officer, uh, MBTA, transit police officer, or a state trooper, now, it says, apply now.
Yeah, I want to.
Yeah, so, um, yeah. You can always use more good police officers.
All right, new business. I thought Frank was going to be here.
So, you might not have a lot on the next.
Yeah, I just, again, the only, um, thing I'm gonna add, and we can put this for new business next time, because Frank has a whole plan he wants to lay out for us and what he thinks, um, but he also had just today asked if he could be considered to also be on, uh, once he's off, to go on to the actual committee, or commission.
Can you, can someone just let him know, just, I don't care if it's opposed to notice something, but just to be consistent with what we're doing, that we get that request to be appointed.
I think, yeah, I think we do have.
You have something already?
Yeah, he just did today, so.
And let him chair the, the proxy presentation that, uh, Frank wants to, um, just, is the question, oh, you want towards the town interests, is what the, the restructure position possibly, or?
No, we haven't, uh, done that, anything on that at all.
No pre-work or anything, okay.
No, he just had a whole, uh, slew of thoughts.
Do we have any official applicants yet, for the Director job?
No.
No, okay.
Uh, Steve is on, he's one of those Michaels.
So why don't you?
Steve, any baby yet?
Uh, it's muted, it's muted, can you turn it on?
Steve, if you're there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here, I'm actually better, my kid's scared.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry for you.
I'm driving, and I don't wanna, I'm trying to pull up.
Are you in Boston, or you're on your way?
Uh, we're on our way, we're gonna stay there tonight, and, uh, babies coming to me very early tomorrow, so.
Excellent, well, best of luck to you both.
So just for our viewers, because we're trying to, they're talking on stuff that we know, uh, Select Member Steve Hornsby and his wife, Susan and I, uh, do expect from later, a child tomorrow, and so, uh, we wish, obviously, we'll.
All the best.
Yes.
It's like a, look, there's like a granny video.
All right.
I, I say if you're driving, you just shut off the camera, you know, at this point, it gets dark as it is.
Yeah, I would just turn it off.
I think we would all agree and vote for that.
All right, Mike, discussion on the tax increment financing agreement.
All right, and if I, uh, if I start confusing you, Corey Snidens is on from, uh, Alilim also, who can straighten me up, but, um, back in October of 2020, town meeting, uh, voted to amend the TIF agreement to Alilim, and the amendment was mainly for, um, two things. Um, in the original TIF agreement, it gave a dollar value of the project of, uh, $100 million, and it turns out, the project is $200 million. And also, in the original TIF agreement, there was the creation of 150 to 200 new jobs, and, um, the new TIF agreement says 125 jobs. So those were the main amendments, um, at the town meeting.
So just before we move on to what the new president, Madam Chair, three, um, so the originally, what was the date of the original TIF?
Uh, yeah, the original TIF was, uh, November 19th of 2015.
Okay. And then, in 2020, we amended by increasing the valuation, because the building, it was some confusion over the cost of, what the valuation of the building, and they felt that they couldn't meet the promise of employee counts, correct?
But they increased the value of the property.
Right, and doubled the value. And then, the, uh, employee, uh, permanent full-time jobs, um, was 150 to 200 in 2015 amendment, and then the 2020 amendment, that was reduced to 125.
And so this was ratified at town meeting?
Yes, and then, um, we had a flow with it, because there was, um, there's a BTV case, um, along with that, a lot of values were calculated, and, um, the assessors settled that with, um, Alilim, and so.
So what is our role in conserving?
You have to, um, town meeting ratified, you can't give it to the authority to sign.
So Madam Chair, so Mike, they've been, so, back in 20, it's 22, in 21, Alilim came to us and said, valuation, it's 200 thou- $200 million valuation, and they, they wanted us to get bumped up to $200 million valuation. So what settlement did they, did they come to?
So the settlement was for how the TIF was implemented, um, the sum, uh, you have the value of the land, they can use the land, and then whatever's built on the property, that's where the TIF is on. The land is fully taxed, and the TIF is on the increased value from the building. At the time, the assessors were determined to be that, because the building was such an ex- a large building, took so long to build, that they had started partially taxing the building as it went along, and in the TIF agreements, the, the, so the ten, the part that they had already started taxing, they said, well, the TIF's not on that part, that's, uh, fall of the tax, and that's where the dispute came. And then when the attorney sat down, and we're here at the State of Law, um, they came to an agreement that Alilim's right, that shouldn't just the land, and the TIF is on there above that land, uh, but Alilim agreed, um, not, because it would have been making it to us, um, except they're like, 1.5 million dollars, or else, oh, it was, they agreed to spread that out over 11 years, the assessors, so that, uh, they're gonna take that in, and spread out.
In our package is that letter, that determination from the state, and we could see that letter of determination from the state, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
The settlement?
No. You said that the state, that you said that the, so, the economic development, development in the state determines the approval of the TIF, did the, did they, when they said the determination, because the way it was presented to us in the original rest, this was their mistake, not our mistake?
Yeah, they would not make a determination.
So they did make the determination?
State would not make a determination, uh, State Economic Development Committee, they know it was the attorneys for Alilim, the attorneys of the town, came to the settlement.
Okay, the reason I say this is, this is the third time they're going to the level. The first time was the first proposal, uh, from what my understanding is, and I'll stand to be corrective, if it is, they, they went to town meeting again, made changes, bumped it up 200,000, and then lowered the number of workers, now they're coming back to us and saying, well, no, 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 the TIF should be covering, the, the TIF should be covering 200,000, when that wasn't the agreement. And I understand the million dollars, but that wasn't, the million dollars, that was a holdback on, that they were holding back, saying, no, no, the valuation's 200, 200 million, if I'm wrong about this, correct? This is a, again, and we said this with, I mean, I was former, um, this member, Conway, and I first sat at that first meeting, and then I think, uh, former member, uh, Delly, who and I sat for a meeting as well, he said, this is the, this was their mistake, and they're going back to the level the third time.
Well, the way the attorneys, attorney did was that Alilim was correct in how the TIF should be a lot of.
So is that, do we have a letter of that determination of lawyers?
They have the agreement, but the lower.
That's in our package, I think.
The letter is, but, okay. So, I don't have to, and so now, just, now, this has been going on for over a year and a half, that, this, this in particular case, and from my take on it, it was their mistake on what the valuations, they did not present the $200 million building to the town, they presented, they, we, they presented a much lower, and the first part of the taxation was, we set dates on the first TIF, they missed the deadlines for the building, for the, for building the building, they were delayed, and it just, the valuation was less. Am I, am I wrong about that?
Well, I don't know, let me, let me phrase it different ways, so, we're benefiting because the building's actually valued higher, so we're getting more tax revenue, because the building is valued at 200 million instead of 100 million, um, so.
But not yet, I mean, ultimately, yes, but not yet, because we're giving them a TIF.
Well, but look at the percentages, though, if you look, we're in year.
If you're giving 10% of 200 million versus 10% of 100 million.
Right, and, and year, we're probably in year, if year 15 was year one, so we're in year nine, 10? Okay, do my math. 15, 2015, we're in 2020, great, so that is.
Eight years, six years, seven years?
No, eight years.
Eight seconds.
So we're in year nine.
Give me one second, please, I'm just doing this like.
So that's 60%.
Put the two documents next to each other.
And then, then you're looking at, you know, we're actually gonna be, their exemption percentage is gonna be going down, um.
So, I, I see the November agreement, the TIF agreement between Alilim and us, and I go to the next page, and I see on page two, that's from the first agreement, okay, these companies' obligations.
So let me just ask a question, should I can, so the, the first year of, the first year we are assessing and collecting taxes on this property would be what year?
Fiscal year 21.
Because we don't, the TIF doesn't start.
Right.
Until the building is completed and occupied, because you, otherwise, you'd be just getting, for year one, if you started taxing it in 2016, you'd only be taxing land, which is zippo, close to it, it's not gonna be a lot of money, so, so.
So like, in the agreement, it says, you know, the parties agree that the subject property was overvalued in fiscal year 2022, um, and the parties agree that the real estate tax abatement, that otherwise would be owed to Alilim in fiscal year 2022, uh, was 1,500,000. So all that remaining 11 years of the TIF, agreeing by reduction in the annual assessment, by the assessing in the month, such that the real estate taxes paid on each year by Alilim will be reduced by approximately 130,000 a year.
Okay.
Can you just give me a moment, please?
Yeah, so, the way I'm interpreting it is, is that the, the TIF only begins after the property has been occupied.
Correct.
Opened, let's say, just using layman's terms.
The TIF begins one year after occupancy.
Occupancy.
So year one.
This building's not occupied, this building's occupied?
It is now.
It is, yeah, yeah.
But when, when did it become occupied?
TIF began in 2021, fiscal year 2021.
So that's considered year one?
Mm-hmm.
Right, because prior, because prior to that, it's not, it's not an operational, it's not operational, so.
You're just paying taxes on the.
Right.
On just the land.
On the land.
On the land, but, so.
Right, you, we don't want it, the town doesn't want it, use the tax just for the land.
So.
Because the tax, we don't want, we don't want.
They want the highest price.
Right, yeah, we don't want the TIF to begin until it's fully, it's quote-unquote "fully valued," land plus, plus the, uh, plus the property, but it sounds like what's been determined is, is that the only thing that the TIF applies to is the, um, the building. But it sounds like what's been determined is, is that the only thing that the TIF applies to is the, um, the building, not the land.
So the base...
And that's law, that's illegal.
Yeah, so the base value of the land, um, is the eight hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. That can go up, you know, as properties get reassessed and the value of the land goes up too. So that is the base value.
This is what, this was their argument, but that's not what we agreed upon in the original TIF. And they have the right to do that, and they had the right to correct the TIF, the second TIF, and they didn't.
Then the original TIF had just said that the TIF would begin one year after occupancy.
One year after occupancy. So they started, they moved in in twenty, TIF started in twenty-one.
And so that's at fifty percent, so in year two, we're talking ninety-five percent?
Ninety-five percent of two hundred million. Or, or the rate times two hundred million.
Right, which, which it should be, and what the town approved the second time was a hundred, based on a hundred million. So they'd be paying full tax for the other hundred million. And that's what they agreed upon, right?
Well, no, what the town, the town agreed on the value of the building, which was estimated at that time to be a hundred million.
So in my mind, this, this is better for us.
Right.
Right? We're getting, we're valuing the building at two hundred million dollars. We're applying the fifty, fifty percent or...
The first year.
For the first year, um, against two hundred million dollars times whatever the rate is, that's what we're getting, that's what the, that's what we're getting. Right?
Madam Chair, I'm so sorry.
Am I getting that right?
So Michael, you're seeing it as a whole separate hundred thousand, a hundred million, that we should just be...
Yeah, 'cause if I'm not mistaken, it was the land. Right, the first one was...
But that's what they're saying, the legal...
Right, that's exactly what they're saying, the land, the base value of the land...
That they agreed to and signed, the original, the original and the second agreement, the, Anilo accepted that.
Accepted what?
The land, evaluation on the land.
They, they want the tax to be on the valuation.
I know what they want, but that's not what they accepted.
No, that's what, that's what, that's what they accepted, we didn't.
No, no, but the agreement that we, the, the tax agreement, just because somebody wants something, they went back to the well twice with that same contract on that agreement, and we signed it, and the voters in this authorized it.
So...
And then they came back, says, no, 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 it's on the value of the building. And we said, that's not what was agreed to. Am I wrong?
Yeah.
I am wrong?
Yeah.
Mike, Mike, I sat through, then I, then I waited, then I sat through ten meetings with the Nilo, and they admitted that they made the mistake.
I think the thing is, that, don't think of any values, just think of the vacant land, and then what gets built on that property, whatever the value is, that's what the TIF is on.
But what was the original agreement for? It doesn't, it was the original agreement to the building?
Yes, that was always the intent.
Not intent, what was agreed upon, intent is different than...
That, that is the agreement, the agreement, that's what the agreement is on a TIF, it's whatever...
It's the future, um...
Right. What usually happens, the building's usually finished in one year, and the TIF is on everything that was built on the property. The, the value of the land is always fully taxed, and whatever gets built on that, what the issue was, was that the town started billing El Nilo taxes for portions of the building that were built in full. And then, when the assessors, um, set what the, um, TIF was on, they excluded that value out of the building. It said it was everything, so you have the land fully taxed. Usually you build a building, that's what the TIF's on. Well, you had the land, El Nilo built the building, portion of the building, the assessors started taxing it, and then they said, the TIF's only on what's built from here to here, but it really should be, as the attorneys, our attorney agreed, from the ground up, whatever's built on it.
And so when they came back to the well, the second time, how come they didn't fix this?
Because they didn't, they didn't know that was gonna be happening, the TIF hadn't gone, hadn't started yet.
Madam Chair, a man, Madam Chair, I would love to see the original agreement, the EDC minutes, the second agreement, the minutes from the town meeting, because the, something's not making sense to me. I've sat through several meetings with this, and we realized, in those meetings, it was identified that there was a consultant who made a mistake. And I, just not clear to me where it is. And I, not, with all due respect, Mr. Town Manager, I just sat through these meetings and it was just, it's still not, it's still not clear to me.
That's, that's, because what you, what you're, what you're saying is what we were interpreting, you know? We, but in the end, the attorney said, well, what you're interpreting is wrong.
Then why did we, then what, I, then we got a bigger problem. Did our attorney, did our, their attorney, because every attorney, your TIFs go back and forth, they agreed upon what was documented.
Yeah, but until, until it was taxed, there were, no one knew that there was an issue.
The numbers didn't talk about the valuation?
Not in any agreements. So you have a TIF agreement, and then how the assessors interpret that TIF agreement, that's what became the issue. They interpreted it one way, that the attorney said, you shouldn't have it, that's not the way you should have interpreted it. It should have been just the way you've done every other TIF.
So, it, it, it sounds there's enough confusion, that we're clearly not gonna take a vote on this tonight, so I think...
I would ask that we wait.
I, I'm gonna ask that we wait, and then we're gonna, um, figure out who the right people that we need to involve in a discussion, and any, and, and, or all the documentation that we need, so we can...
Yeah, and I apologize to the board.
No, 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 I have to...
I, I obviously, the agenda was, I obviously didn't do enough research to follow up on this.
No, no.
I just, this is something that I, I, before you, I sat with other members, previous members, and I think there's, there's something that's not making sense to me.
No, that's fine, we'll, we'll, we'll pull all the right people together and discuss, because we, otherwise, we're just gonna keep going on circles.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
None of us have the whole picture.
Thank you, thank you, Mike, for kind of explaining, I know, I apologize, I don't think I could.
All right, so we will tailor that for the next meeting, and we will pull on the right information together. All right, excellent. Uh, review and or vote on Norton's senior community support center project to Seaver Construction.
So, yep, you have in your packet, uh, the list of bidders that were received. And, uh, Mr. James Slidern, chairman of the building committee, has requested that, um, a contract be awarded to Seaver Construction. Yeah, their bid was seven million, seven hundred and three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. And the next lowest was eight million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Nice.
And Madam Chair, um, what was the estimated, what was the original estimated cost of this? If I may ask the chair, the member, uh, of the committee, or...
Mike, don't go, I, I'll blow a figure off that with nine million.
No, no, that's, it was higher than, I knew it was...
It was higher than...
It was definitely higher than what came in, which is, yes.
The two lowest bids were below our estimate.
That's great.
The other three were higher than our estimate.
I love it.
Considered between two and three is probably, which would be above my...
And this is a testament...
I'm just here to answer questions, which I can't answer.
Would you like to...
You're doing a fine job of it so far.
Any color you'd like to add to, other than what you had sent us, um, about, about Seaver Construction, is there...
Well, being a fully transparent person, that gets me in trouble. We had trouble with the bit, low bidder, um, you may hear rumors, you may not. After he submitted the low bid, and, um, we thought that he may have looked at the other bids and realized that, hey, I'm way lower than I should be. He asked to withdraw his bid, which we had a board meeting, and we agreed that he could withdraw it. He then requested within twenty-four hours to resubmit his bid. We agreed to let him do that, but he had to give us a reason why he felt that, what the problem was that he thought was with the bid. He resubmitted the exact same bid with no reason, whether it was somebody was dyslexic, or a number fell off the bulletin board or something, I had no idea. So, our OPM and our architect, everybody looked at it, everybody really put them under a microscope to make sure that something doesn't happen in the future, because we, you know, there's a question already and we haven't awarded the bid yet. So, um, everything seemed fine with our OPM, with the architects, and everybody else. So we, as a committee of the selectmen, select board, agreed on the low bidder, but we had to report back to you, we can't award the bid. And that's all the letter was to do. But, in being the chairperson, I felt that I should be here if you had a question. I'm here not to get in your face this time, but just to be humble.
Yes.
Um, so, what I'm hearing is, is that like anybody, you get a quote, it looks low, you wanted to, as a committee, make sure that that, that quote is still reasonable despite the bid.
Well, it looked low, and then he wanted to withdraw his bid.
Right, right.
Which, okay, if you wanna withdraw, he, from what we understand, he really can't once he's bid, but, then all of a sudden, he resubits the bid. So what's going on here that, you know, it's like going to buy a car, and they wanna sell it to you for a hundred dollars, and you know it's worth two hundred dollars, and you, uh, then all of a sudden, he calls you up and says you can still have it for a hundred dollars. We don't know whether he took the battery out, took off the new tires, or whatever. So, he was gonna, and we went to the attorney general to see if it, if it was okay in the process of what we did. And the attorney general said, the process was fine, whatever we did was legal, didn't have a problem with it. So, it was a completely legal action and a legal bid. And so we just gave you a report, the report to you.
So I know you can't, you can't look into the future, but you, at this time, you feel pretty confident that it's a, it's a, it's a reasonable bid, and we're not gonna come back, and it's gonna end up being nine million at some point, you know, or...
We're hoping not, although I am prepared to make a statement at our next meeting, that I would hope that nobody tries to spend this money we're saving, because we don't know until it's done, what the number is gonna be. So don't start coming up with, well, we want a swimming pool at the senior center, we want a fishing dock for the pond, no more pro, no nothing, what it is is what it is. When we pay the final bill, hopefully in a year and a half from now, it'll be the seven million, dah 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 dah.
And is there, um, what is the next step?
If I, can I add something?
Any step?
Sorry, I'm, I'm not here to help, Tom. When they resubmitted the bid, they didn't make any changes, correct, Jim?
Correct, correct, they did not make any changes.
They made no change, you resubmitted the same bid.
Like, I wasn't sure, but, yeah, that when they resubmitted, they made no changes.
Correct.
What he, yeah, I think what he really did was he withdrew his intent to withdraw, so his bid was still there. And, uh, if I could, if the board could vote to authorize me to sign a contract, uh, Seaver Construction, uh, board?
Ball of discussion, uh, motion to, actually before that, this has nothing to do with that motion. Um, Madam Chair, before we make that motion, can I just ask, we need, what is the next step, and what is, when's the groundbreaking? Is there a groundbreaking ceremony?
I did not bring any of my paperwork with me, can give you dates and times, so that you can reserve time. Um, in keeping with the progress that the school committee made, there will be no golden shovels for a groundbreaking, because we can't afford it. Um, hopefully, we're hoping to get them started in the spring. We're pushing to have the empty lot next door empty, so that the contractor, if he, if we get this signed tonight, and he decides tomorrow later he wants to start moving stuff in, although this would not be for the community center, so... But if he wants to start moving stuff in up on, um, Mansfield Ave, then he can do it right away, if he wants to start. And, you know, he, he's gotta go out for bid and do all the stuff for the house to knock it down. So, that's a, a bump in the road for us, because he can't come in and start doing anything else. But, um, I'm thinking that somewhere around, um, I'm gonna say May first should be groundbreaking.
And is it base bid, which one do you, which is the spending amount, base bid or base bid with alternatives?
Base bid with alternatives.
Al, al, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Alternatives, yeah.
Alternatives, okay.
Thank you.
Perfect, um, thank you very much. Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve the town manager to go into, to sign any contract with Seaver Construction for Norton Senior and Community Support Center project, um, in the amount of, um, seven million, seven hundred and three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
I would gladly second that.
Aldous, oh, no, roll call, sorry. Uh, we're gonna do a roll call. Steve Horns, please?
Yes.
Michael Toole?
Aye.
Kevin Snyder?
Yes.
And I too, a yes. Yay!
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congrats, this is awesome.
Thanks, Jim.
Don't congratulate, too. Steve has his dot, his child's first birthday party in the community center.
We're definitely gonna do that.
First birthday party, there you go, that's your, that's your target.
We don't have like, we don't have any like copper shovels, wood shovels around we can use?
I have two, we can just...
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure Keith's got a shovel or two that he might be able to loan us and put a ribbon on it.
I'll go down, I'll go down to Keith, borrow six shovels, get some Rust-Oleum, spray them gold.
Perfect.
This is no one's style.
And go borrow them from the highway department for two dollars.
Well, and as a special major, I have the big scissors in my office, so you need big scissors and guns.
I have two of the silver, silver shovels, one from the treatment plant, and one from the high school project. Just don't have the cameras zoom in, uh, but it says on it.
So, so the, uh, the treatment plant had a shov, the, the water department can pay for the shovel, and the school can pay the shovel, the town still can't pay for the shovels?
I surely don't get the water department involved in anything, thank you, because it'll cost us more money than we'll save.
I, I say, I say that, it'll snap comically and say, it's a...
Then I say it costs. All right.
Excellent.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh, discussion on the position, town moderator, I just wanted to bring this up. Um, you know, there've been the back and forth, as we all know, um, Walter has moved, um, his now mailing address is in Mansfield, he still owns his place in Norton. Um, there is no, uh, there is no business as of right now that he would have to conduct between now and the town meeting. Um, that being said, we do have, Bill Gavaya is the appointed, uh, alternate, uh, deputy. Yeah, he was from that, because remember when Walter couldn't be at the, one of the town meetings, um, there was a movement to have Bill as an official appointed deputy.
So, um, two years ago, he was appointed deputy?
Right.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's a year term?
You don't think so, but it is?
Every...
Every town meeting, every town meeting.
So...
Spring town meeting, a deputy is supposed to be...
I think to the point, though, I think there's no business that's pending.
If, if it comes up, we will have to address it, if the, if someone leaves the finance committee, then we will have to...
And right now, they're full, so the finance committee has operated, has operated with one or two vacancies before, I don't think it's crippling. Well, it would've been, it would've been really bad if all of a sudden the finance committee's empty, and we were going into budget season, and...
And the April town election, that's, he's up for reelection, so...
I, no, I think it was important that we just addressed that, because it was out there that he, and congratulations to him, doing, you know, it sounds like they're having their own journey of a lifetime.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, may I add something?
Yep.
Um, I think, uh, I'm not sure, the audio's kind of breaking up, so I'm not sure if it, what we said, but, um, if, just because he owns the property does not mean he's a registered voter in town. If he rents a property out, then he would not be eligible.
Correct, so...
So that it, yeah.
Yeah, you know, he's not eligible.
Just what I had.
Yeah, no, no, he's not eligible anymore, um, but, again, because we have the town election coming up, there's, um...
Yeah.
If, if we have some, some need, we will bring it back up again and figure it out.
Yeah, no, thank you.
And that letter, unfortunately, is gonna go up to Paul on, uh, you know, nobody right now...
Two later, we will have a moderator, then that one, we said, too.
So in that case, if anyone is thinking about running for moderator, nomination papers, the last day to obtain them is March nine... the last day to obtain them is March 9th. And the last day to file the nomination papers with the town clerk is March 24th. So, if someone wants to run for moderator, can you...
Was that, that was put out, because did that happen simultaneously when the last round was put out on what was available?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Do you want to name them?
You might, you might as well, I feel like you're favored, so you might as well just go down the list.
We have one position open for water and soil commission, one for school committee moderator, two planning board, for two, three years, one planning board for two years, one housing authority for five years, board of assessor, two for three years, and select board one for three years. Those are the openings, people that are in those positions could be running again, just...
Yes.
Now, does the moderator appoint the deputy moderator or does the select board?
The moderator appoints the deputies to enter approved at town meeting.
Although, because he's, does he automatically lose his position when he moves out of town?
Yes.
Or do you have to officially de-designate him as moderator?
So, from my understanding, by changing his mailing address, that pretty much disqualified him from the position when we got to him, changing his mailing address disqualified him because you can't have a different mailing address and he's registered as a voter.
He may not have registered to vote in the town yet.
But he's mailing address.
No, he has to in order to, in order to run, you have to be registered.
The purpose, the purpose of the question is, he could make an appointment himself and save you the trouble of ten leagues down the road when nobody runs for moderator or anything else. If he's appointed but designated somebody, that's my only question.
It still would need to be approved by town meeting, we do not get to approve that, town meeting needs to approve that.
Because it's elected position.
The deputy, I'm talking about the deputy.
Right. But because the moderator's elected position, he can...
Okay, I, I just thought the moderator did it on his own. My second question is, due to the lack of news coverage by our local newspaper, is there any way of announcing this moderator's position? Because I think everybody's aware of the select board positions. But this mod, I know you've announced it here at the meeting and it becomes part of the minutes, but...
We can, we can have...
I don't see anybody here at our select board meeting, we get very little coverage in the outer borough sun. Is there some way of upgrading our notifications to them?
At least you put it in the newspaper?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if they were, the new, I know their social media, they were posted out, they were put in the seven common places, but I wasn't sure the newspaper.
Yeah, they should be put in the...
I'm sure they were, article two.
Yeah.
I know there was an article two or three weeks ago about all the openings.
Well, the moderator should have been in there then.
Whatever.
Yeah, because that's coming up for reelection anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, regardless, if he was, if Walter was still there, then this position is becoming available regardless, so. All right.
Love spending a lot of time on something that really has still...
We weren't good at that tonight, or, or like a...
It sounded really bad, I didn't even mean to imply it.
Like a jenga, we're like, oh yeah, one of these. All right, any other business anticipated? All right, old business, we're not going to, we're going to move this one because the attorneys are not present to review and or approve the Greek plucky committees. So, that'll be brought to the next meeting. Select board, oh, the town report and dedication, this is the thing that gets kicked out.
So, so a question to ask you.
Yes.
And I think...
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Am I supposed to be writing the dedication?
Well, we, sorry.
It's totally up, whatever, we can...
Because I think we, we passed around, there was some communication that was not a required of open media law, but it was, it was communication and...
About the who of the dedication?
Who they should, I don't know.
I thought we went back and forth.
We were supposed to, we asked somebody else, that person, if they wanted to write it, that person said they prefer if the select board wrote it. I don't mind taking it if that's...
Okay, it's totally up to you, if you want to do it.
I, you know, so we, I will do this, but I will open, send it to you guys for grammatical acceptance.
Perfect, perfect, why don't we do that? That's perfect.
Did you agree on who?
Do we, do we do that before, do we do that before, we did agree on it?
Yeah.
And did we, do we do it, I don't think we announced it before, we did not announce it, so.
No.
We did, we did agree, we did agree on that.
No, not until it comes out.
What else besides a dedication is...
I think they...
That girl.
Do you have a template? Or is there...
I'll give you...
Well, I can just look at a previous ones, okay.
And it's for the previous fiscal...
Right, right, right. FYI.
Anything that happened before July 1st, June 30th to July 1st.
Right. Yeah, we look off this one, so. All right, we'll talk offline on that. And the dates on that we'll get, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay. Town manager.
All right. Just some good news that well 6A is up and received permission from the state to begin operating. Just to give you an idea, the previous well 6 was old and it was not running well, it was down to about a hundred gallons per minute. The new well, well 6A, will be six hundred gallons per minute, so.
Wait, what was the first one?
One hundred. So, this is great to have this done and then we went on to well 5A, so.
Which, Madam Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, with the new wells pumping at those levels, the dependence on well one, which is, everyone just admits that's a low shallow well, there's a lot of debris that comes out of there, well one was supporting the low pump of five and six, correct?
So, the idea when they built the treatment plan was to upgrade these wells so we wouldn't have to rely on that.
Right, and this is, this is, it doesn't sound exciting, but this is actually one step in that process of moving forward on the water.
And just on that, another issue they had, well, they had to put out a public notice of, I hate to say these terms, try halomethanes in the water that the eighty parts per billion is standard. And at a couple of our locations last year, where we're testing, one is at eighty-three parts per billion and another one is at ninety-one parts per billion. But, the past four calendar quarters in that period, and then the last quarter, no, it was above the parts per billion. And they've been doing some short-term measures where they've been flushing more, especially at the dead end of the streets, to get through some of that old standing water. And the long-term, they're going to put an air rain or a water stream tank and help prevent some situations happening in the future. It's not something that, in the water at these levels, that's dangerous to most people. Major caution to check the water in here, health compromised or have to ask them about. Other than that, the last quarter was, what they require by the state, but that notice I'm giving to them.
When was the last time we had the, I think if it was DPW discussion was the last time we had a water pump to give us kind of an update or the, has it been a while?
Been a while.
Has it been a long time? Maybe, maybe put that on our future agenda just to find out, you know, what's, obviously because they're an enterprise account, they're not managed, they're managed kind of separately and so, kind of come in and give us an update. This is good news, you know, they've been taking them in the chops for the last 10 years, you know, the good news is this. The other question I have is, have we gone down and has there been any discussion about PFOs with the water?
Will we test FAR, I haven't hit, I haven't gone public on that.
Don't say anything, that's good that they test FARs.
Obviously, it's out there, so there's always discussion. Unfortunately, the grant monies that are out there to start and treat the FAR, can't get it to that bit. So, I'll have them address that.
Yeah, I think that's, Madam Chair, I think it's highlight, we just kind of get, get an update on them.
All right. I just wanted to announce one thing, our state senator, our state representative, Timothy Representative Powers.
Senator Feeney. He was that, he's that previous senator.
That right. For the work they did on this, they were receiving, yeah, mark two hundred thousand dollars for the use of this water by the design study for the water and soil and health of the street so that the re-farm facility is one of the main focuses of that. I appreciate that they did a lot of work to get this for us and that'll help. We already have the other grant of two hundred eighty dollars, I think it was, and now this will be added to that, so.
Wasn't the whole, like to get rid of the whole thing, it's not...
The site itself?
Yeah.
I don't know if there was ever a...
Number on it?
Everyone was very afraid of the second base that they didn't want to, nobody, that those prices vary in this, this is, this isn't that, this is the water main going down.
Right.
That basically would bring, yeah, which would bring for the month.
And so, someone is moving forward, they've been court to acquire the property, so hopefully after, so that things, they were waiting, say they're going to appeal, they're assigning for the court that they own the property, I don't think there's anyone out there to appeal, so.
So, so can I, can I ask a question? I can come up at very town meetings and I know it's part of a ten prober program, so it had to be able to mean on that property for the, for the amount of...
Actually, our attorneys asked us this week, what are they on, so we're, I don't know, and then it will become an issue. Do we really want that back if it's going to be a challenge for the deal or is it better just to leave?
I mean, I think the reason I would like to see it on there is, I would like to have a discussion. If it's not on there, you can't even have a discussion to remove it or reduce it or whatever it is, but there was money, town money spent on that, on a property that we didn't know that somebody will benefit from.
So, Alex Whiteite and Mark Rich are working on it, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, that would be awesome.
And then, I have here...
Wow!
The assigned legislative...
I know, I saw that, that's amazing.
...by the additional two liquor licenses, so.
And they're special assignment liquor licenses, they're not, just to be very clear, they're special assignment liquor licenses.
So...
So, they're not for restaurants or anything, this is purely because it can't be drunk on...
Alcohol, not to be drunk on the premises.
And it goes from the west side of town to the outer boroughs then. So, it's from Michelle's, from the...
Dunkin' Donuts.
The hill to the outer borough line and from...
495.
495 to the eastern line. Those are the only two areas that these license, licenses can be assigned.
And the difference with these licenses is they come back.
Correct. They can't sell them.
They can't sell these licenses. So, if someone decides they don't want to operate anymore, you, you get to assign the license to somebody else.
And that's awesome.
Is that the, is that the truth to every special legislative license?
I don't think so, because we had one other and that was not put in there.
Okay.
But now, I think they've...
Now they've, now they've, but the other one could be sold and it could be moved?
Yeah.
Really?
I believe so, I'll have to look at that special legislation.
Okay.
This is, I didn't know they ever did this until they told me they were doing this, so. Because there's a lot of state representatives, state senators that don't like adding more of their licenses.
This is, this is new practice of the code. They don't, this is, I was shocked, I was like, this isn't going to get approved and...
Steve, Steve Howard did work hard on it, although he's dead, he told me that, but he promoted it, so I thank him for that.
And I, we know that there is a process that the EDC has worked on to a selection on these. I would just really encourage the EDC, before they give any recommendation, don't just, these are licenses that, that don't have to be handed out. I would encourage the EDC to really consider the impact on other liquor stores within the town when assigning this. Because if you, even though I voted in favor of this, I really only wanted to see one. I don't, I want to go, the outer borough side, I don't think is one is needed over there. Definitely on the western side of town, I think it was absolutely...
Well, and just for the record, I, I know we talked about, you know, some of the liquor stores that don't have, you know, what people are looking for, so they go to lines of more and things like that. So, I went to New York Liquors and just asked the guy, bought my, the bottle that I always drank in, said, can you get this? Put in an order and it's now stocked all the time. So, I encourage those...
No pressure.
Right.
Give him the brown bag, yeah?
I'm saying, just, you know, for the record, for the current businesses in town, just ask, you know, I know same with the old Bear'sville, I keep forgetting the new name, but same thing with them, just, you know, if, if there's something you're looking for, you know, just ask. And we should, we're going to come along.
So, we will see these liquor, if EDC decides to move forward with these, we will see that.
They would have to have a...
They will, they will come to us for the final approval.
I'll send them the legislation as it's approved so they have that.
So, at the last EDC meeting, we were just waiting for the, for the final...
Forgetting, sorry.
No, no, you guys keep talking about EDC.
We have, we share.
But, no, so, yeah, we do have the process documented and, and in place and it's thorough, it's, you know, so all that will be considered, right? What's best for the town is at the forefront of it. And then, and then, yeah, so we were just waiting for the governor's signature at the last meeting, so this is great, so we'll get moving on.
And, and just, I had been approached by several liquor, liquor store owners that were very, very concerned about the outer borough side of the license, they were very, very concerned about that.
What's down there?
Yeah, what's over there now?
You've got Michelle's, right on that strip, you don't have Michelle's, but over there, you've got the, in that, the cluster, we did that, there's probably two or three within a, kind of as the eagle flies type area. Right, you have Charlie, you've got the, Charlie Stiles closed, but the Dallas, so, sorry.
Highland or Highland?
Highlands, you've got Highlands. You also have, let me see if it's down...
Well, then on our side, we have Curtis Farm, Norton Liquors.
Right, that's down there. And then, there's absolutely one needed and, you know, I'm assuming, you know, Quick Stop probably drew a flyer, but they've always sent us a letter every year, the liquor, there's nothing in that eastern side of the area. So, this movement to get this up, absolutely.
No pressure.
No pressure again when I say you don't have to drink at all, but I appreciate it.
All right. Any update from select board members?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just one thing for me. So, a few meetings ago, I was pointing to the GATRA, we are having our first meeting, I'm having my first meeting with the advisory board and if any, anyone has any concerns, I would encourage them to reach out to me. My cell, I'm never afraid to give out my cell, six one seven eight four nine zero zero eight four, or my M tool at Norton M A U S dot com. If they have concerns of any transportation, additionally, there will be a meeting being called with GATRA, the town manager and Jay Barrows.
That hasn't been said yet, right?
No, they couldn't nail down Jay Barrows and Senator Feeney to try to see if there's any way to figure out better transportation from Norton to the bus line service to Logan. So, there's a couple of things that we're working on.
Mansfield just opened up.
That's the one.
That's what we're trying to tie into.
You want to tie the parking lot here, the public parking lot in the town, to that, so you might be able to park your car there, take the, take the ride over the bus, the GATRA over there.
That would be nice.
The, the other thing that I was surprised about, I actually called GATRA this morning, I was going to Boston, called early this morning, the dial service doesn't look like it goes into effect until after eight o'clock. That's, I, obviously, I'm not sure you have to call the night before, but we, I think one of the things that we can do as a town is maybe, I have no problem taking it on as a representative, maybe we can build a, drill a flyer of the service or work with GATRA to find out there's a flyer for the services that we can run through the town. You know, it's... You know, it's, you know, public service, I mean, public transportation is, is a certain population within our town that uses it, and we have to make sure that we have the best services.
Right, I agree.
Just one, you also, just one thing for me, sort of related to the EDC. We were, we were going through the master plan recently, and, you know, one of the, one of the items in there is making sure that we're working with Wheaton on, you know, any economic development opportunities, and I think I asked at the last meeting if we had a Wheaton representative on the select board, and also, you know, what opportunities are there for us to, to partner with Wheaton going forward? So I'd be happy to, to, you know, work with Mike on, you know, trying to get some kind of, you know, restart of a relationship there.
We have lots of, we do have many actual residents that actually work at Wheaton, you know, professors and administrators and whatnot, so we should certainly, I think some of them would probably want to be, you know, part of that, so...
If they're having regular, you know, regular meetings that we can participate in, or, you know, just regular conversations, I don't really know too much about it, just putting it out there for, you know, for possible discussion, so...
Yeah, Kevin, I don't think, and I don't, it's not a reflection on the new president, but I think they're, they changed over several people within there, some of the key people in there. And, you know, Ms. Cass left there, who was an active resident within town, the new president, Dennis was very, very president down, and we just haven't, I don't think we've, as a town, I think we probably could probably do a little bit better, we're all busy, right there, busy, we're busy, and so I know that, I know the chief had talked about possibly there's a, a meeting coming up with them, so I know the town, the town manager has been saying, gonna leverage that or something, to kind of get the contacts going, and probably this will be a good message.
And they should be appointing as, as the new president, you know, figures out the administration, should be appointing someone that does town gats, so that's like, that's a position at universities that is pretty prominent, so...
Between us, I would love to see some kind of, and, and this is just a balloon, I, like a crazy idea, just some kind of memo of understanding regarding usage for town organizations in, in some of their, you know, facilities, you know, such as this, I know what they have to do, but I have to operate. But I know, like, our basketball, our, some of the other sporting towns have struggled sometimes to use some of their facilities, which I don't think they're using to its fullest, so, I would love to see, I would love to see some kind of...
Is there any town, because other places do this, town residents can use their facilities, their gym?
So, I don't think that's in place here, but I know...
Almost every center, like that, they offer that.
I'll check, when I have lunch with the president. I know they can attend programs, I'll find out and see what they can and can't.
A lot of this is due, and even if it's at a discounted, obviously discounted rate, but, and they sometimes have town hours for local residents.
I know, when I was at Old Eastern, we, they allowed people the Fenway to access to their facility. Were beautiful, it was a beautiful option, it was a lot, it was a very affordable option for the gym.
So it's a big part of the master plan, right, which is, you know, you're trying to, to do, trying to make sort of destinations in town and all that kind of stuff, and there might be opportunities for them to, you know, whether it's, you know, open an art gallery or something like that, to try to make, you know, make the area more attractive for visitors and people, they have to be a part of that, they're just such a huge part of that part of town, of that area of town, that, you know, just makes sense for us to see if there's opportunities.
So when are you meeting with the president?
The 23rd.
So maybe this will recontinue the conversation.
I'll find out who the key people are, to, on different...
I believe Ireland is still one of the key people over there, and he's the president of baseball. First gentleman, last name is Ireland, and I'm going, the Harbinger, I'm going blank on his name, say again?
Zach Irish.
Zach Irish, thank you. Look at you, look at you, that's wow, holy moly, look at you. The, the other, one other thing, ma'am, should just put in people, Kevin. Is there a way that you might be able to champion the select, the EDC and maybe the select board? The EDC takes its mission and drive, we know what the mission, there's mission, established mission, but it's direction from the town manager and the select board. One of the things that I feel the EDC's happened is it's turned to more policy committee. It's, this is something you guys talked about tonight, it's great, it's incredible, this, and, you know, I want to make sure that it's clear, kind of like, this is what we really want the EDC to work on, not necessarily policy, even though there's some things that overlap policy, licenses might be policy.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I think, I think part of it too is that, you know, there's a few things going on here, one is that there wasn't, you know, the last couple of years have been somewhat of a unique situation.
Absolutely.
So, but also, you know, that board has...
Turned over.
Yeah, there's been quite a bit of turnover on it, so, yeah, I think, you know, anytime you can kind of look at the goals and what it's supposed to be and what it is, but we've been having some really good discussions recently about, you know, not policy, like, you know, trying to drive, trying to drive, you know, obviously the main goal is to drive businesses to town, and, and connect businesses in town and all that kind of stuff, so, so, yeah.
Okay.
But certainly, yeah, we can have that discussion.
Awesome.
Oh, and the other thing I want to mention is that not having a director of planning.
Absolutely.
There has also been, so, we did have Maria come in and meet with us at our last meeting, and, you know, obviously, you know, we've talked about her in the past, but very impressive, has a lot of great ideas, and it just has helped, I think it helped us kind of, you know, get some things moving that were a little bit stalled, because there was no planning director there, so we really dug deep into like the master plan and all that, to try to start, to try to continue getting it some, moving, but maybe accelerate some of the things a little bit.
And did you, did you know, did you congratulate her, she is the newest citizen that I know of of this area, I believe she just is naturalized last Thursday, she was naturalized as a citizen.
Oh, that's amazing.
So, it's, yeah.
That's great, he's excited for it, that's great, so, yeah, so all good things from the EDC moving forward, I think, so, good stuff.
All right. All right, I approve the invoicing table of warrants as Dr. Lee, and it's, sorry, it's our table, gentlemen. And next meeting agenda is Thursday, January 26th.
Same, same.
Same location.
Same place, same time.
I can try this and see how it works.
Well, are all you guys all comfortable over there?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's...
Don't am the screen.
I will, I will, before we, I make a motion to adjourn, 819 is a pretty, pretty, this is kind of a...
This was a light agenda, I...
I like to make a motion to adjourn the January 12th select board meeting, so... Roll call.
Roll call. Steve, watch me?
He's gone.
I, yeah, he is off, so that we don't have to do roll call, that's all.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any moves? All right, thanks for sharing.